Manchester Town Council. Again, we're meeting via Zoom. And I guess we are broadcast out over YouTube and then these will be saved. So the community members, interested parties can do this later. And certainly send in questions and we'll get to those if we're not able to get to them during the meeting. We'll begin with pledge of allegiance. Switch over, we have a virtual background here and get my face off of it. And. Everybody, so I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right. First order of business. We have, we do have a quorum. Councilwoman Smith may be joining us, a scheduling conflict this evening. Councilwoman Howe, we believe, has some technical difficulties which are not uncommon. Right now, as we are navigating through doing everything from home. We hope this is our last meeting of this nature and that we're able to get back to being in person for our July meetings. Likely with some modifications. So more to come on that, but for right now, we'll go with what we have. We do have a quorum, so we'll move forward. First order of business approval of May 12, 2020 minutes. We have a motion to approve the minutes.
I make a motion, we approve the minutes.
The motion of a second?
I'll second that.
Motion second. Any other comments, additions or corrections? And then all those, raise your hands, say aye in favor. Opposed? All right, thank you. Just my view here. Second order of business, receipt of the April 2020 treasures report. Should have a copy electronically. Do we have a motion to receive the April 2020 treasures report?
I make a motion, we received the April 2020 treasure report.
I'll second that.
Motion second by Councilman Pacelli. All's in favor, say aye, raise your hand.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Finally, check register for May 2020. The motion to receive the check register for May.
I'll make a motion that we receive the May 2020 check register.
I'll second that motion.
Motion is second in the discussion. All's in favor, raise your hand, say aye.
Aye.
Our motion carries unanimously. Mayor's report. We have a couple of items here. First, want to congratulate Ms. Abby Brown, who's recipient of the Charlotte Collette Memorial Scholarship. She plans to attend Stevenson University in the fall. Thank you for those council members that participated on the committee again this year. As always, we have a lot of great applicants, a lot of great young people in our community. I don't remember the number of hours, and everybody does here, but it was substantial that Ms. Abby Brown completed. In addition, congratulations to all the graduates of Manchester Valley High School, a lot of folks here in town throughout the community. And I'm sure that somebody else here may bring up the parade, but thank you to all in the community. Police Department, Fire Department, community members came together. It seemed to turn out like a pretty good event for the youngsters that are graduating in a non-traditional year and didn't really get to have that traditional graduation experience. A couple of reminders, Hughes will not pick up any recycling container if they see plastic bags. This is something that just kind of happens continually. So please don't have plastic bags hanging out. Don't bring them down there in the plastic bags that you down there. They're not recyclable or, you know, nor do they belong in the yard waste. Yard waste will continue on Fridays through November. Again, grass clippings, leaves, small branches, not in excess of three feet, four inches in diameter. Put them in bundle full loads or some kind of container that can be picked up by the guys. No plastic bags again. Water bills, water bills are going to become an issue here over the next couple of months. So due to COVID-19, the water and sewer bills that were due May 15th, not all of those are paid. The town will adhere to Governor Hogan's orders prohibiting a termination of residential services or applying late fees while we're under the state of emergency. We do not know how long the state of emergency will go. That's continuing to develop, but things seem to be opening up, as I'm sure everybody is aware. Since our town office is close to the public, residents are asked to use the postal service. We have a drop box out front or pay online. Typically, there's a convenience fee of $3.95 for paying online, which does not go to us. This is something that it's a pass through. But we are waving at the town as picking that up at this time since you're not able to come into the office and deal with us in person. Bulk trash was previously canceled due to, or postponed rather, due to COVID. That will be Wednesday, July 15th. If you have an item, please call Hughes. So you can be placed on the list and get any special instructions that may come along with that. A couple other special thanks here to those, you know, who made or donated face masks, especially Belva Lamott. Custom Draperies by Ms. Doris Miller. Councilwoman Smith, if she's able to join, she may also have a few things to say about a resident in her neighborhood. Manchester Farms, Mrs. Anne Lawson-Dinner. She made over 1,200 masks locally here for free. And I believe still may have some more if anybody out there needs some. So you can contact the town, we can help get you in touch with her. That is all I have. I'll turn it over to town administrator.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Council. We'll go ahead and start with the May 2020 administrative report. Under pending items, there is no movement on the opioid litigation. Items number two and three on my report, they've been taken off the agenda for this evening. The Freedom Wireless lease, we lease space on the Manchester Baptist Church tank to Freedom Wireless. We had a meeting held on June 3rd with their staff. And we are updating the lease and the MOU for entering the facility there. Nothing at this time in regards to small cell tower coordinates. Patriots overlooking annexation, there was some discussion at the planning zoning work session on June 4th. As you may have noticed, the Whispering Valley Stormwater Management Facility retrofit project. That's approximately 50%, complete. That's looking very well at the intersection of Route 30 and Michelle Road. The athletic field lighting project, the directional boring for the conduit of the wires, that is complete. And the poles are to be removed next week, the old poles and lights. So that project's moving right along. Under code enforcement, you were supplied the monthly code enforcement update. Give you some updates on some miscellaneous items. The roof at the historical center, that will be coming up later as an action item. The Sustainable Communities Work Group, I'm working with them to try to set up a meeting date based around the group restriction order. So once, once that's lifted, I want to get this group together because there's many things that we want to work on. Also, Chief Hess, Kelly and I are working with our town attorney in regards to updating our current emergency lead policy. And we're looking at a possible tiered policy. So that will be coming back to you folks for review over the next month. Under COVID-19 updates, and this is as of June 9th. Of course, Town Hall and the Police Department remain close to the public. We're making preliminary modifications to the entry area when the public is allowed in, as well as modifications to our meeting room. As Mayor Warner stated, if we make modifications to our meeting room, we may be able to get everybody back in here for our July meeting. Can't promise anything, but we'll, we'll see what we can do based on the governor's orders at that time. All of our staff came back to work on Monday, May the 18th. Things have been working out very well. Our staff is practicing good social distancing and wearing masks within Town Hall. We are closely monitoring the water and sewer revenues in regards to the school closures. So with the schools being closed, we did have a loss of revenue of the possibility of around $4,500. I did the math and I believe with folks being home during that period. I believe that the lost water will be made up through the residents across the board using, using more water basically because they were home more. We do not have all the meter reads in from the last quarter, so we're still gathering the information. But we're hoping that our revenue stream stays steady. So we've been watching that very closely. The park pavilion rentals have been canceled through June 21st. Of course, this is based on the social gathering orders. All the pavilions are currently closed, as well as the public bathrooms. And we are also looking into hands-free public restrooms at Christmas Tree Park. I did send everyone the information on the COVID relief fund funding that was approved. And we're waiting on a meeting date for that. And also, all the vital services of town continue on schedule. So any questions in regards to the administrative report?
Steve, do we, do we know when Number One North has to be totally out of that building on the corner?
Actually, they still own the building. They've moved pretty much everything out of there. There's not much left in there except the old coolers and everything. So that's pretty much abandoned, to tell you the truth.
Okay, I'm just curious.
Yes. Any other questions? I'll move into the public works report. Okay, the public works report for May 2020. You receive the monthly water and wastewater data report. Also, you can see that's a new format and we want to thank Caleb Matthews for this. Caleb designed that and it's a, it's a new format and easier to read. Of course, DBW staff returned to full-time status like the rest of the group on May 18th. The folks have to keep up their training for their certification for water and wastewater. And they've been doing a good job through the training center via Zoom. And it's been working out very well. So it's a big change from a classroom setting to Zoom. And the operators are doing a fine job. Of course, underwater, our daily checks and the maintenance are continuing. Under wastewater, we did have a kickoff meeting on May 21st. And this is regard, in regards to the ENR upgrade and possible expansion of the wastewater treatment plant. The first phase, and this is testing and evaluation at our plant, that will begin sometime around, oh, it actually began yesterday, June 8th. My, my, my thought on that. Also Rodney has here, the wastewater treatment plan and spray irrigation field flow meters have been calibrated. Under parks, maintenance, roads, stormwater. Working the park continues mowing and wood chip mulching around the playground equipment. And also today, we started our first phase of the ADA sidewalk installation. The historical museum AC repairs, HVAC repairs, that will resume the week of June 15th. Currently, that project's about 75%. And street and town facility rehabilitation projects in regards to our roads. The bid documents are about 95% complete. And of course, all the roads and areas have been identified and marked and it will be advertised for bids this month. And they have, DPW has no action items for this month. Any questions on that? Okay, so actually, the only action item that we have is the roof bid. So Mayor, we can either do that now or later. It's up to you.
We don't have it on.
It's actually on the agenda. My fault. Yeah. That's my fault.
If we don't have it separately as an agenda item, I would say let's just go ahead and do it now.
It's, it's a separate item. That's my fault.
I'm toggling back and forth here.
That'll give me time to find it.
Yeah, we do. You're right. Shouldn't have been that hard. There's like three things on the agenda. Uh, any other questions for Steve on the, the town administration report, public works report, anything related? Hearing none, we'll move on to the police report. Chief?
Yes, sir. So our calls for service, they have picked up for the month of May 2020. We had 146 calls for service, 20 of which were outside of town. We had no significant calls. We did investigate two shop liftings at Millers Market. Both were cleared by what we call exception. The suspects were positively identified. But they did not want to pursue the charges. For the most part, the calls continue to be minor in nature. I will say traffic complaints are a big issue across the county. We're getting back on track issuing citations and warnings. We began our focus in probably about the last week of May, maybe the second to last, somewhere in that, that area. We've issued 43 citations and warnings. Our efforts will continue and they will increase. We're also joined by the Sheriff's Office and the Maryland State Police. Across the board, traffic enforcement is going to pick up. Bottom line, drivers need to slow down and start a ban of traffic devices. It was getting a little out of hand. There were 46 overdoses in the month of May, six being fatal. There's 160 cases for the year, 19 fatalities. The hardest hit community is Westminster with 54, followed by Tawny Town with 10. Hampstead with seven, and we're, knock on wood, holding at zero. Pretty much it for the police report. I do want to thank the many who have sent us cards, snacks, pizzas, showing their support for us. Dana Bracato, also of Custom Draperies for making masks. It's all very much appreciated. The parade, that could turn out to be an annual thing. It, it was good. It was smooth. It was long, but everybody listened to us for safety. There was no hot dogging going on. They took their time. It was well received. So I could definitely see that as a, maybe a yearly event. We're getting ready to do two events for Manchester Elementary. And I think that's the first one's going to take care, take place Thursday. And the second one is going to be on Sunday involving just this immediate area around Town Hall and Christmas Tree Park and the activity building. It's going to be like a mini farewell to the students moving on to middle school. That's about it.
Very good. Any questions for the chief? All right, we'll move on to agenda item Mr. Miller brought up, roof repair, a historic center. Steve, I know you spoke briefly on it. Do you want to give a once-over on this?
I'll give you an overall view. If you folks recall, our Old Town Hall, which is now our historical center, is divided up into two separate halves. The front half is the half that we're speaking about, and that has a rubber roof on, on the roof section. The back half has asphalt shingles. But we did put monies in the budget, the upcoming budget to repair them. But due to numerous leaks that have occurred over the last several years, Kelly and I talked about this and we felt that if we could put together enough money, we could get this repair taken care of and not damage anything in the historical center or the building itself. So we, we solicited three companies that do rubber roof sealing. And only one company actually responded back to us, and that was Zook's Roofing. Actually, their price was $5,800. Now, one thing that Zook's Roofing recommended, that after they waterproofed the roof, the rubber roof, is that a drain be installed in the roof area, which we have one section that's low, to get rid of that water in that one section. So with Zook's bid and also the additional funds to install a drain and pipe it out into the drain system, we're looking at $8,000. For that $8,000, Zook's Roofing will guarantee and warrant that roof for 10 years after the, after the work is complete. So they come in, they seal everything with a coating. The drain has to be installed and then hopefully for, knock on wood, for 10 years, it'll be warranted. So we're asking for $8,000 to complete this project. And as you can see in Kelly's bid tab, that we have some monies left in the HVAC project, other line items, and also taking some money from the historical center savings account.
Yeah, they have about $17,000 in the savings account.
All right, just so I understand, so the other line items, Kelly, these would be?
Supplies.
Yeah, and aggregation of leftover amounts in the 2020 budget that will not be encumbering, will deal with encumbrances, I guess, next month.
Correct.
And then Steve, for you, having gone through this and just for the record, you do recommend doing the full, not the $5,800 job, but getting the warranty and going through with the full drain system.
Yes, actually, the $5,800 is Zook's bid. But then our folks will be doing the drain and the other supplies that are needed. So the total, the total package would be $8,000.
Okay, so just for the record here, we're not awarding Zook's Roofing $8,000, rewarding them $5,800.
That is correct, yes. $5,800, which includes the 10-year warranty with that. That is correct, yes.
Okay, understood. And the sec, my second question. It's just, I guess, a clarification of my understanding. This is a municipal building that was deeded to us and we are under the obligation to maintain it and to use it for municipal purposes. So.
You are correct.
And this is something that we really need to do anyway. We do need to maintain this building. This, according to, in the staff, I think where we are, and the price seems reasonable. The best way to go forward and prevent further damage.
Correct.
Steve?
Yes?
Steve, just to understand correctly, we're talking about a sealant on the rubber portion of the roof?
That's correct. There's a sealant that they put down. They come in, they power wash the entire roof area. And then they, they apply a tack coat primer, and I'm reading their specs right here. And then they install what's called spun flex fabric and rapid roof base coat. 2.25 gallons per square foot, I guess. I'm looking at per square on the rubber field seams and around all penetrations. And two gallons per square over the entire roof area.
Okay.
Be a very thick, thick coating on top.
Yeah, well, I just got concerned about a sealant. It's like $5,800 for a sealant. I see this is much more than just a sealant. Thank you.
Yes, it's a, it's a whole process that they go through to apply that, yes.
That was a good question.
Any other questions? On this? Hearing none, do we have a motion to award the bid to move forward the roof repair and award the bid to? Actually, let me ask one more question. Is this two separate, we, can we do this whole project with one motion? Because this is, are we awarding a bid and then also doing an appropriation to pull money together from separate places in order to do internal work?
So we want to do a motion to approve the $5,800 for Zook's and then?
I think it's cleaner if we do that as two separate things.
That's fine.
Let's handle Zook's first, the awarding of the bid, if there's a motion to move forward on the one bid that we got.
I'll make a motion that we accept Zook's Roofing's bid in the amount of $5,800 for roof repair at the Manchester Historical Center.
I'll second that.
Motion is second. Near discussion. All's in favor, raise your hands, say aye. Those. I think the second motion would be a motion to appropriate funds from available budget line items and the Historical Center Savings Fund to cover the bid amount and internal costs associated with the roof repair, something like that. Unless somebody else has an idea on how to, how to word that better. Any thoughts or motions?
I liked the motion. I got kind of caught up in the words. We're writing fast enough.
So are you, are you willing, Dale, are you willing to make a motion as, as I stated it for the record?
Yes.
A motion.
I just wasn't taking fast enough notes.
I'll second that.
Motion is second. Any other discussion? All's in favor, say aye, raise your hand. All right, motion carries. So I think we're good on that. We're good to move forward. All right, I don't have everything printed out this week. I was trying, I thought I could toggle with two screens here. I don't see it on the agenda unless I'm not looking at the most recent one. Were we bringing up today the work that came back from planning and zoning on ordinance 244? I know that we're not voting on it, but are we? At least, I guess, announcing or we're talking about that we do have some clarify, some guidance and some information that came back from planning and zoning on that. I think we'll handle that in July. So everybody should have, I'm just pretty new to everybody. I've only read through it one time.
Yeah, because today, so the mayor and council will take, will need time to kind of absorb all that.
Okay. We'll just state for the record then that that did come back to the mayor and council. There are some additional things in there to go through and discuss next month. That'll be an agenda item next month. Kelly or anybody else have any questions or comments from the community? Anything coming in before the meeting or during the meeting?
Nothing before the meeting, but someone did email me and I shipped that off to you, Brian. Email, they had their verbiage what they wanted to pass on.
All right, let me second my email.
I mean.
I'm sorry, I.
I can read it if you prefer.
Screen's going and it's not enough to handle everything paperlessly here. Do you want to read it?
Sure, I can. My name is Michael Stensel. I'm a represent, I represent the four houses on Seattle Speedway, which is off of Burn Court that are opposed to the Patriots overlook annexation. We continue to be opposed to the idea that they annex the area around us where the builder has specifically said there would be county properties behind us. One acre plus size lots is still on the builder's sign. That is on Park Avenue even today. We have been watching the planning and commission work sessions, meetings, where they have been mostly discussing the Lippi annexation and now have started talking about the Patriots overlook annexation. I appreciate the hard work and time that the Planning and Zoning Commission members have been putting into these sessions. I thank them and hope they will continue to do their due diligence in weighing these annexations in regards to how it will affect Manchester City, how it will unfortunately impact the water sewer system in Manchester City, how it will sound, how it will surround our four county properties and how it will impact the Amazon amazing forests around us. Thank you for hearing me. That was from Michael Stensel.
Okay. I did sit in, and I know there's a couple of points in there and I don't know if necessarily is a question to be answered, but I was a little late. But I did join planning and zoning commission meeting last week and I know that they did talk to, start talking about the Patriots overlook. That was on the same timetable as Lippi's, which is, you know, obviously ahead and came in before COVID and COVID has slowed the, the meetings, I guess, scheduled down for that. But to each one of those points, Dale could speak to this as well, that they're all considered. And I think all of those things are part of the discussion. So hopefully we can get back to having in-person meetings and it'll be a little bit easier for folks in the community to come in and look at the same documents and have a discussion and talk. So if it's in July. Dale, do you have anything to add? I know that you were in on that meeting as well.
During my report, I was going to give an update on the, on the Lippi annexation. And then just as you said, real, we just began our discussions on the Patriots overlook annexation. So we'll, we plan to continue those discussions at next week's meeting.
Okay. Kelly, thanks for reading that. Is there anything else? I didn't notice the little thing at the bottom of the zoom that said we had.
Sorry about that. Um, yeah, nothing.
Yeah. All right, moving to committee reports. Councilwoman Smith's now with us. Councilwoman Miller.
Okay, the only thing that I have to report is that we did get confirmation that we have received Banner City for 2020.
Did you need to get, um, thank you for doing that. I know that you put a lot of work into that in the spirit of the last couple of years. Did you have to get something signed by Mayor Rup to get that in or did he sign it for you?
What they did was they waived the school visit because schools were closed, so we couldn't go. And what I told them is I had reached out to get confirmation on our meetings, but they were doing an honor system this year because of distancing and stuff. So they just accepted on the honor system that we went to all the meetings that I said we went to.
Yeah, I think we were there anyway.
Yeah, I know we had representatives at everything.
Okay. All right, Councilwoman Howe is not with us. Council, am I getting that out of order here?
Yeah, you are.
Councilman Pacelli.
I have nothing to report at this time.
I'm glad I came back to you then.
Yes, thank you.
Councilman Wilder.
Okay, yeah, as the mayor, as the mayor mentioned, following a request by the mayor and council, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a work session last Thursday to discuss the annexation of the Lippi property and Patriots overlook. For the Lippi property, we had some more information that we were looking for regarding water and wastewater. For the Lippi property, we had some more information that we were looking for regarding water and wastewater. Steve and Rodney did an excellent job providing the information that we had needed. Our next step is to provide our recommendation to the mayor and council on the annexation of the property. So at next week's meeting, the commission will vote to either recommend annexation, recommend annexation with conditions, or recommend the town not annex the property. That's something that has to be done by vote, so we'll be doing that at next week's meeting. And then, as I mentioned, we began discussions on the Patriots Overlook Annexation, and we'll continue that next week as well. That's it for me.
Okay. Any questions from anybody? Anything else for the, the group? Pretty quick meeting. A reminder, council meeting July 14th, hopefully in person, more to come on that. I think that's it, and I guess Dale, you guys are meeting the next Tuesday, and that will be remote, right?
Yes, next Tuesday is our regularly scheduled meeting.
All right, if there's nothing else, entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
I saw two, motion second, all's in favor, raise your hands.
Aye.
All right. All right, so long, guys. Take care.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody.